Well, I'd like to reconvene the Board of Commissioners for this afternoon of January 26. We'll work with the next order of business is item 12, it's Public Works. First item A is the first reading and setting the second reading in public hearing for ordinance 13, 1317 in the matter of amending the Rural Comprehensive Plan to re-designate land from agricultural to marginal land and rezoning that land from exclusive farm use E40 to marginal land ML/SR with the site review and adopting savings and severability clauses. It's file number 509PA12-05208, property map 18-02-29, tax lot 3508. Owner Margaret Iverson, Iverson Living Trust. Applicants represented Bill Close. We have Lydia McKinnney.
Thank you Chair, Commissioners. I'm Lydia McKinnney with the Land Management Division. This item is a first reading, so staff does not have a report prepared. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any, but our recommendation is for today just to set the second reading in public hearing for two weeks from today.
So that would be February, two weeks from today, February 2nd? No, excuse me, it'd be February 9th?
February 9th.
Thank you, sorry, it's three weeks of the next board's meeting.
Okay. Is that time certain, 1:30?
Yes.
So are there any questions for staff? I think that I would entertain a motion to move the first reading and set the second reading.
So I'll move the first reading and setting the second reading in public hearing for ordinance number 1317 for February 9th at 1:30 time certain.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That says 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is our second reading in public hearing for ordinance number 16-01 in the matter of amending L.A.N.E.C.O.D., Chapter 16, to enact legislative and housekeeping changes. It's file number 509-PA15-05615. And with us is Lindsey Eichner, our Associate Planner. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Commissioners. So today I'm going to do a quick review of the history of where these proposed changes have come from, and then I'll do really brief summaries of what the changes are. I'm happy to answer questions of further detail after my report, and then I'll give a recommendation to conclude my report. I just wanted to give you a little overview of what I was gonna present. So today we have a handful of changes we're proposing to add or make to L.A.N.E.C.O.D. Chapter 16 specifically. If we go back almost, well, a little over a year back to December 2014, the Board approved an ordinance 1409, which amended the code more than just housekeeping and legislative amendments, it made some policy decisions. And that ordinance, or portions of that ordinance, were appealed in a timely matter to Luba with review with legal counsel. We actually requested a voluntary remand so that we could determine what the best step for the county would be versus spend staff time arguing our position at the state because we did feel additional findings were needed to help support that ordinance. So Luba granted us a voluntary remand. We held a handful of work sessions between the Planning Commission and before the Board, and the direction as a consensus from you was that staff revert the definitions back to the previous language for now, and then when we work on updating the farm and forest zones in Chapter 16 in the near future, we could then look at other options for those definitions. For same-site replacement area was the main definition that was at issue. So we've taken those changes of reverting those definitions back in our code, so that's one section of the changes. The other section is, comes from the 2015 legislative updates, and very minor housekeeping and scrivener errors of misnumberings or references to the wrong section of code are kind of where the changes are coming from. So no major policy changes that we haven't already vetted before you today. So as a summary of the changes, the first one is that we are going to revert the definition of building back to the former definition, which is removing language that exempted temporary membrane structures from the definition of building, so we're striking that sentence. We are updating the F1, F2, and the park and rec zone to be consistent with statute and state that a caretaker residence for public parks and public fish hatcheries is in the code. Before it was unclear if a fish hatchery had to be public or not, in statute it's very clear. So we're updating our code to be consistent with statute there. We're revising the same-site definitions in the F1, F2, and EFU zones pertaining to accessory structures and replacement dwellings to go back to the 200 by 200 foot square definition in response to the Luba appeal. And we are adding a new exception for minimum lot size for partitions in the farm and forest zones for parcels that straddle urban growth boundaries. There's not many in the county, but there are some, and we felt it was important to add it to our code for citizens that want to exercise that right. And that is per House Bill 2457. There's a handful of scrivener's errors. One is in the special use section of the F2 zone in the general provision section to update a code citation. There are a couple other scrivener's errors in the F2 zone. There's an error in numbering in Section 7 of the F2 zone and Section 7 of the EFU zone, which are L.A.N.E.C.O.D. 16 to 11 and L.A.N.E.C.O.D. 16 to 12. We reorganized one of the sections in the exclusive farm use zone. Because the way it was written, we tried to implement specialties permit years ago and found out that when you compare it against state law, our code was difficult to administer. It didn't, the organization of how it was organized didn't make sense. We actually requested an opinion from DLCD. They provided that opinion within comments of how to restructure that, but it is definitely more consistent with how the state law is written than our code previously was. It does not restrict any uses that a property owner could apply for. It actually would benefit a property owner if they qualify under that dwelling option. We amended the winery provision in the exclusive farm use zone, reference between two sets of criteria for when you want to have more than six events at a winery per year. Under statute, those events, commercial events are limited to be less than 25% of the gross annual income, and we were missing a link to that criteria in the code. And our last big change is in the rural commercial zone, rural industrial, rural public facilities, and rural park and recreation zone. And right now, if you look at the language pertaining to signs and the requirements that signs have to meet in those zones, there are content-specific requirements. So you're only allowed to have signs in those zones that show uses that are allowed in those zones. And that is in conflict with free speech laws and in conflict with the state constitution. So we are proposing to strike those requirements, that we will not regulate content of signs, which we currently do not, but we, it's, the right thing is to do is to remove that from our code as well. So staff, along with the Planning Commission unanimously recommends option 1, which is to approve ordinance 1601 as presented, and if the Board approves the ordinance today, it will go into effect 13 days from today. I did want to make one small note on the actual ordinance itself. In the title of the ordinance, it calls out a planning action, or a file number 509PA04-053, and it should be file number 509PA14-05053. I did bring amended copies of that with me today for your convenience, but I would recommend making the change to the ordinance. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Lindsey, I heard, and I appreciate the work, especially on the wineries. I do have a question though, and not necessarily pertaining to this piece, but, so I think it was this week or late last week, the Jackson family group of wineries down in Sonoma just purchased the old Evergreen Aviation. And they just purchased several of those buildings with the intent of creating a major wine-growing operation within those aviation buildings. I'm guessing that because this is Yamhill County, which they're obviously set up quite well in the winery, the vineyard industry as well. My question is if, and this is, I'm not expecting the answer today, but it's just something maybe to take away. I don't know of any, you know, Hynix is now out of the question now, but I think Evergreen is out, is in Yamhill County and not in McMinnville, so it's outside of the city. So my question would be if a major ag business like that made a decision to come purchase a large-scale multiple buildings for wine-growing operations with L.A.N.E.C.O.D., is that something that can be done? I'm absolutely believing that, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm guessing they did their due diligence, and it was during an auction. So the buildings were being auctioned, they won out, if you will. And this is, this is the home of Kendall Jackson is who this is, so this is this winery down in Sonoma, so they're making a big bet in Yamhill County. So just something to take away, and because I think, I'm gonna watch that, I mean, I'm really curious to see what's gonna happen there, and how that, you know, changes the industry, I guess, in itself here in Oregon, but it's just something that maybe if we can just take a look at. But other than that, I don't have pertinent questions on the housekeeping. I do appreciate the work. I think on the wineries itself, I have interest in that just because I think there's a real opportunity there for, in L.A.N.E.C.O.D. on the economic and tourism side. I do know that in King Estates, that's where Louisville in Tennessee were taking Mercedes Russell and her family to lure her to see which school she was gonna go to at the time, so, and, but anyway, so I appreciate that. But that's just maybe a side piece. I'm really curious to see how that's gonna work, because that is, those are large facilities, buildings that they made the purchase on in Yamhill County, so that's really all I have. Thank you.
I'd be happy to follow up with you on that.
Any other questions? Okay, so this is a public hearing. This time I'd like to open the public hearing, and I don't believe that there's anybody signed up to speak, so I will move to close the public hearing and look to the Board for discussion, comments, or possible motion. Mr. Far.
I move, passing the second reading in public hearing of ordinance number 1601 in the matter of amending L.A.N.E.C.O.D., Chapter 16, to enact legislative and housekeeping changes, and...
Should we go ahead and include the changed file number?
Probably.
I think the file number...
For formality.
If I got it right, it's 509-PA14-05053. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's included in the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a second. Further discussion? I guess I'd just like to say thank you to staff. I know that we tried to make some changes that we thought were helpful for our citizens in the county, and noticed a little bit of resistance with the membrane definition and also the definition of a building site, but I think that this was a good compromise to go back to what it was and deal with it in another way possibly at a later time, so... Any further comments? Mr. Mokaiaski at ordinance, could you read the rule, please?
Commissioner Sorenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Lichen?
Aye.
Commissioner Bozovich?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
All right. That says 5-0. Great. So the next item is C, it's Order 16-01-12-06 in the matter of entering into a memorandum of understanding between the county and the Department of Land Conservation and Development for the drafting of model farm, forest, and marginal land zoning regulations. We have with us Chair Miller, our Senior Planner. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Stewart, and good afternoon Commissioners. So the purpose of today's discussion, just a quick bit of background, back on October 20th, the Board had a work session with staff in which we discussed the possibility of entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. There were some funding, there was some funding available from the state to assist a number of counties in the state with the development of model land use codes for our resource zones. That includes the impacted and non-impacted forest lands, exclusive farm use zone, and our marginal land zone. At that time, the Board directed staff to start the process and get a memorandum of understanding signed with the state to move forward on this. We did go ahead and do that, and we brought to you, I believe it was earlier this month, the memorandum of understanding with the state, which didn't really get into the background or details of the project at all, it was more of the instrument just to get staff working with the state on the project, and I know that the Board has been contacted from some members of the community with concerns about the project, which is completely appropriate, and we felt it's, and the Board directed us to come back and kind of give you an overview of the project and maybe try to alleviate some of those concerns out of the gate, and also adjust the schedule to ensure that there's appropriate time for public comment involvement in this, what is a very important project. So we're here today, just, I've got a few slides for you to give you a little bit of background in those in, who may be watching, so they can understand this project more and feel comfortable with it moving forward. So I'm just gonna launch my slides. So just to give you a little bit of background on why we're here, as the Board is aware, our L.A.N.E.C.O.D. Chapter 16 is very outdated. It's been an item, the updates of the code that have been on the work plan for several years now. It's complex, it's not always in line with state law, as you just heard from the last item that was presented. Each year we sort of piecemeal bring to you updates that have been made through the legislature, and we try to capture all those. There was a period where we didn't bring any updates to the Board for several years, and our codes as a result have gotten out of date. They're very difficult to understand for the general public. For so many just standard, ordinary things that a person would want to do with their property, they tend to need to hire a land use consultant or a land use attorney just to complete that, and we feel, staff, that's just unacceptable, and our goal is to try to make our code more user-friendly to the general public. So that being said, we did add a scoping project on our long-range work plan for this fiscal year, and that was intended to kind of identify the issues with the code and develop a work plan to, in the future, address which sections of the code we should update and a sequencing for that. Sort of unrelated to that, but at the same time, the Department of Land Conservation and Development announced that it had funding available to help counties with the development of model zones. And concurrent with that, staff had already applied to the Department of Land Conservation as we do almost every biennial to seek technical assistance grant funds, and that was specifically to conduct the scoping project for L.A.N.E.C.O.D. Chapter 16. Those funds are very competitive, they generally have to be tied to a direct economic development project, for example, the Goshen Project, something like that, that's what rises to the level with the state. So we were turned down, but the state did make us aware of this model zone assistance. It's not technically a grant. What the state has done is they've hired a consulting firm to work with counties directly. It's sort of a cost-share program that they hire a consultant to work with counties to review and audit their land use codes and implement some model codes that have been developed by the state. So that's sort of a little bit of the background. Why we're coming to you with this now is because it's obvious that there's this resource available from the state, and we want to leverage that and not miss out on that. It also coincides with your direction to work on Chapter 16 during this fiscal year. And then we want to take advantage of what the state has come up with. We're actually the second phase in the state model zone development, as I'll talk about in a little bit. They've gone through this process, and they've developed model zones for the farm and forest zones. L.A.N.E.C.O.D. is a little bit different, we're regulated under ORS 215-213, which means we're a marginal lands county. So our zoning regulations and what's allowable in our farm and forest zones are a little bit different than the rest of the state. So we've been working with the consultants just initially in conversations in DLCD, and they do recognize that we're unique in that role, and that we will have tailored model ordinances that work for the county, which would be different from those developed around the state. The real advantage we see with working with DLCD and the consultant on this project is they've done a lot of the heavy lifting to develop a model zone that is in compliance with state law, takes into effect, into account rather, all of the recent Luba case law, and is really a great starting place for us to look at updating our code. We certainly wouldn't be able to take the code off the shelf and just adopt it whole cloth. There are some policy issues that will come up as we review our codes. There are definitely some issues that need to be identified. But our underlying goal, and I guess I'll, let me talk a little bit about what the codes are, and then I'll talk about staff's position a little bit more. So they were developed to be policy-neutral. They were developed by the state to simply implement what is required under the ORS right now. They reflect these nondiscretionary statutory-driven rule requirements. So the codes would basically tell us, you know, these are all the things that you can do by state law, these are all the things where there is discretion, that the counties may exercise some discretion, and we would identify those through the process and bring them to the Board for policy consideration. And as I mentioned, they would reference recent case law, and they'd be kept up-to-date by the state. So we'd be working off very similar rules that a majority of other counties are working on, are working with, and it would, we feel it has a lot of advantages. It would help us when there's interpretations that need to be made, it would help us hopefully avoid unnecessary appeals because there's lack of clarity in the code. So the state's objectives are really to try to develop a code that has benefits to multiple counties and create these model codes that address the statutory and rule requirements, because there's a lot of counties that are actually even worse off than L.A.N.E.C.O.D. that have codes that are even more outdated than us. So the state's really just trying to bring everybody up to speed with the current law. Staff understands this. Our objectives are really to use the model zones as a starting point, and really we'd like the formatting, they're much more user-friendly, there's lots of white space, there's, you know, modern land use code with a use table, so the general citizens can understand if they want to cite an accessory dwelling, for example, is that a yes or no answer, or is there a separate process? So we're really envisioning the use of these codes as simply a starting place. We intend to bring to the Board the cleanest possible code that's as policy-neutral as possible. Where there are differences in our land use code and the state's model zone, we're gonna clearly articulate those, so the Board's aware of any policy considerations, and we want to identify those choices for you and let that play out in the public process. So I don't really need to get into the background of the model zone development too much, but I'll just say that it was something that was vetted throughout the state. There were three different regional teams that worked on this. There were six counties that initially worked on developing the drafts. I believe three of those counties have adopted the model zones, are implementing them right now. Again, I'll point out that no other county, there's only one other county in Oregon, which is a marginal lands county, and that's Washington, and they haven't gone through this process yet. So we are somewhat unique in our position, so we are, there is time allotted for staff in the work plan proposed to work directly with a consultant to develop rules that are specific to a marginal lands county. So I know there is interest in having staff rework the schedule to ensure that there's sufficient time for public engagement. This is a new schedule, which I believe was emailed out to you last night. It essentially shows a year-long process with ample time for policy discussions with the Board upfront before we move into public hearing process with the Planning Commission. A projected date to actually bring hearings-ready ordinance to the Board is about a year from now, so I think it's a fairly extended schedule that gives ample time to review what is a fairly large undertaking. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. Oh, I'll also mention that the MOU is, there currently is not an order before the Board to adopt MOU. We're still revising the MOU with the state, and we'll come back. If everything is okay with the Board today, we'll just move that to the next available consent calendar for implementation.
Okay. Questions or comments? As I'd like to say thank you, Chair. You weren't able to be here the day that we had this item, so Lydia, if I remember correctly, led the charge, and there was a few comments, and I think a lot of it just had to be make sure that the Board had participation in the process, and where there's decision points or discretionary decisions that are available, that we're making those decisions and staff or the contractors not making them and writing it up and presenting it to us. So I think, you know, in my eyes, that schedule accommodates us being, you know, working with you in describing or defining that work plan, so... Other comments or questions? Commissioner Bozovich?
As the Board member that asked to have this poll, I just wanted to say thank you to both Chair and Lydia for coming back and explaining it, but also for getting me a copy of the schedule and next steps yesterday, and I think you copied the rest of the Board so we had it, so we could understand that there was that period in March, April where we're going to be working with you directly and all, and we'll have our ability to make input and changes as necessary, and just the understanding this is an attempt to be policy-neutral in these changes. That lifted a lot of my concerns about something getting to as far as the Planning Commission with no Board input, and only the input of a third-party consultant hired by the state, who doesn't always see land use in the same way I do. So I feel much better about the process now and the fact that MOU is being amended to include this schedule and process timeline, so it addressed my concerns and a lot of the concerns I was hearing from the development community out in the county. So I'm pleased with the changes you've made, and I'll be ready to... So, I'm pleased with the changes you've made, and I'll be ready to, when it comes back, on the consent calendar to prove it then.
Commissioner Far?
No.
All right. Commissioner Sorenson?
You mentioned that the proposals will be, to the extent, maximum extent practicable, will be policy-neutral. Will there be opportunities to bring up policy issues in those work sessions and with the Planning Commission in March and April, or in June and August, and in September and December, and then in January? In other words, I realize that you're proposing to have policy-neutral change, because we can say neutral and change, but it's changing the code to more fully adopt existing court cases, Lubbock cases, state law changes, and to the extent you can, make it as policy-neutral as possible, just trying to implement that and make it possible for citizens to understand what the current law is. But what I'm asking is, given there are opportunities for local improvements and need to adapt to local conditions, when is, in your view, is it appropriate for those policy issues to be brought up?
Well, Commissioner Sorenson, board, I think that there will be policy issues identified for sure throughout this process. It'll just be the nature of the, you know, vetting this draft document to the public. There'll be longstanding issues that staff's been hearing about for years that may be raised. There'll be new ideas that come about from it, and we certainly want to capture all of that, because that's great input and feedback, and we will do that. To the extent we can, we're going to try to endeavor to keep this train on the tracks, because I think there's a lot of potential for it to get derailed because of the devil's in the detail with a lot of those policy choices, and we really want to get a more user-friendly, workable product out there sooner rather than later. On our long-range work program for the next fiscal year, there will be a continuation, as we envision there will be for several years, of updates to L.A.N. Code. And I think that's the time where I would think it's most appropriate to really dig into some of these difficult issues. But that being said, there will be policy choices that are presented by the board.
Well, if I'm interested in, say, tiny houses, or I'm interested in a big project like making it possible for people to temporarily house homeless people, or I'm interested in climate change, and that's a pretty broad one, just to throw out. But if I'm interested in those things and I'm a citizen, where do I plug into this?
Well, you'd plug in in a number of different ways. I mean, we'll, just like any of our projects, we'll have a public involvement plan and, you know, we'll have an interested parties list, we'll be utilizing the Planning Commission and their role as the citizen advisory committees, so that folks will be free to attend those meetings. And that's all in advance of the, you know, Goal One required public involvement process, which will then be undertaken when this actually goes to public hearing. So, there'll be opportunities to bring those issues up. But as I mentioned, our intent is to try to focus it on those sort of formatting and policy-neutral considerations.
You know, I think Oregon has really benefited by the system of having state goals and having communities try to implement those goals. And if you look at the impact of the Great Recession on Oregon compared to other states, in many ways, because we have had some adherence to the idea of urban growth boundaries in our state, particularly the data that the former state economists put out on the difference between, say, Houston and Portland, as comparing two cities, one with not-so-good land use planning and one with better land use planning, the economic data came out that because people were spending less time commuting, they were spending less money on commuting, and the government was spending less money on infrastructure, that Portland actually came through the recession. And I would just extend that to Portland, Eugene, Salem, and other communities in Oregon that have by and large observed the perspective of the Oregon Land Conservation Development Act, that we've come through that in part because of the imagery of the McCall, you know, plan for Oregon land use. Having said that, you know, a lot's changed in the last 40 years, and I'm not sure that we have really, you know, in our zeal to protect farm and forest land as being the principal driving force, I'm not sure that we've really attempted to deal with a lot of other things that are big-picture items that are out there, that people are talking about, at least informed people are talking about. And I just want to register, you know, my support for it, but also a healthy skepticism that putting a legislative stamp on the concept of urban growth batteries and protection of forest and farmlands, forest and farm areas, that that's not the only thing that's important to people that live in the state. And I think that counties, and particularly large counties that have urban and rural populations, really need to review the policies that are so focused on forest and farmland protection, which I support. But there's lots of other things going on in our state and our economy and the needs. And I think that the legislature, for whatever reason, you know, they've come up with various ideas, mostly in response to citizen initiatives. Those citizen issues, by and large, have been defeated. And I just think that we're kind of in the catbird seat as, what, the only county that has all of the resource goals in one county? So, we're kind of in the middle of it all.
So, if I might, Commissioner Sorenson and commissioners, you're noting something that we have lots of conversations about with our local and regional planning partners, but the way that I think we are thinking of this, so your question being, where should people plug in when they're interested? Because, as you know, there's little things like reformatting the code, which is a little thing, but actually is a big thing, I think, in terms of the usability. But there are also these really large statewide planning issues that I think a lot of the planning directors would like to be able to get together and address, you know, again, at the state level. And that's, I'm not going to call it the big look, but that's kind of one package that I think a lot of us are interested in looking at. And then there's the tail end of it, on the other end, is this Chapter 16 update that we're doing with the M.O.U. So, again, people can participate, we encourage them to. When we hear any kind of information, if it's related either to our own bigger Chapter 16 update that will come after we complete this, or any further discussions that we'll continue to have as a community, it is a great opportunity to hear from people, because we'll start to capture those things. Even if they're not relevant to formatting changes, we'll keep a parking lot, we'll keep an interested parties list, and we'll continue to update that as you move forward. So, I appreciate your comments. And again, I would encourage people to, if they have, if they're interested in this, you know, to provide some feedback, to contact, you know, Kier, contact me, any of the planning staff, and provide that information, and we'll make sure that it's funneled into the right place. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. So, Kier, it sounds like there wasn't anything that was, you know, need to change, but you can present the changes in a consent item and get them to the agenda team, and we'll get it on the next agenda. I did want to say, and I've already probably said this before, I want to thank staff for this. I've been on this board for 11 years and kind of frustrated with the fact that our code is so, in my opinion, out-of-date, you know, back in the '80s to today is a long time. And this is a great opportunity with limited resources that we have, and to be able to, I think, bring our code into today's time and try to make it so that it's clear for folks that own land what they can and can't do, or at least try to make it a little simpler. So, I appreciate that, and I really appreciate the D.L.C.D. for giving us that grant to move this forward. So, looking forward to, I was kind of hopeful that it wouldn't be a year, but I guess that's just the way it works, but it's better than 10 more years down the road. So, thank you. Next item is D. It's a report back on the status of the Land Management Division's fiscal year. We didn't, we didn't need an order.
If I can interrupt real quick. This particular item was for adoption of an order to approve the memorandum, but based on staff's request, I understand the board's going to roll that forward to put it on the consent calendar when that M.O.U. is ready to go.
Right.
Okay. So, just want to make sure we're clarifying what we're doing with today's item.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. All right. Item D is a report back on the status of the Land Management Division's fiscal year 2015-16 Long Range Planning Work Plan. Like to, again, welcome Kier Miller, and thank you for bringing us back. It's always kind of nice now to see mid-year how we're doing with the work and what you're working on, the progress. And then I think that there might be a couple of things that we'd like to put on the radar when we bring this back for a discussion for the work plan of 16-17. So, turn it over to you, Kier. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Chair Stewart. So, yeah, you pretty much gave the background on this. We develop a long-range work plan each year, coincides with the beginning of the fiscal year. This year, the board adopted our long-range work plan back on July 14th. In December, I believe, the board had been hearing some different concerns and issues, as I understand from members of the community, about sort of a perennial issue that we deal with in Oregon, as more and more folks are interested in, you know, making a little bit of additional money with their, you know, this sort of pastoral setting we have here and wanting to host weddings and other gatherings on their properties. So, as I understood it, the board wanted to meet with staff, check in on seeing where we're at with our work plan, and maybe consider looking into the process for how we currently permit weddings and other outdoor venues. Sort of concurrent with that was all of the work that's been undertaken to develop our time, place, and manner standards around the new marijuana regulations. So, I know that that process was very truncated, sort of driven by the state, and we had to sort of rush to get some rules on the books, and we knew as we were crafting those rules that future changes would be needed. And during the public hearing for that process back on, I believe it was December 15th, when the board adopted the time, place, and manner regulations, you indicated that you wanted staff to check back in to talk about the marijuana rules and changes that may be necessary in a process for moving forward with how we might want to make changes. So, I'll leave those two kind of projects there for a minute, and we can come back to direction on those, but I will just give you a brief update of where we're at in our long-range work planning progress. And I'll have to say, I kind of struggled with trying to develop some real metrics for how to explain where we're at with our work plan. I think we're generally on track. I did do some formulas in here that sort of show we're about, you know, 50%, 52% done with our projected work plan. This was right about mid-year when I developed that. I think an easier indicator of where things are at is on this colored slide that's projected here. Essentially, any of the projects that are in yellow are projects that are sort of in progress, ongoing. Most of these things staff doesn't really have a whole lot of control over, or they're just sort of annual work that just occurs as projects are brought to us. A great example is the work with the city of Springfield. We spent a lot of time earlier in this year attending weekly meetings with Springfield on their 2030 plan, sort of drafting, reviewing drafts of their ordinance and findings, et cetera, only to have this city need to push that project back. So, it's obviously not complete yet. So, that's sort of an example of, you know, how we sort of try to identify where we're at. A big piece of it is we just run the numbers and figure out how much hours we've spent at it and how much was budgeted in F.T.E. So, projects in yellow were sort of in progress. The green projects are the ones that are actually complete, that are done. One of them, 2.2, is the one just adopted this afternoon, and 2.4 was associated with that. So, then the projects that are sort of in dark gray are ones that we won't have to undertake this year for different reasons. Either, a couple of them are federally driven and there's just no movement on them yet, and we sort of knew that going into this, that these projects may not take staff resources or they may take quite a bit. So, all of those projects are effectively off the work plan for this year. Some of the projects had a sliding scale in terms of how much staff resources it would take. The one that has taken, you know, probably will take all of our staff resources, if not more, is the drafting of the marijuana regulations. We've spent quite a bit of time working on those rules. We have adopted them, but as I understand it, there, and as I just mentioned, there is some work to be done, some updates to be done, and then we could sort of open them back up for a larger process, and that would obviously exceed what's currently on our work plan. So, I guess the long and the short of it is, I think we're making good progress. There isn't a lot of capacity right now at this point to work on additional work. I mean, I think the projects in red down lower on the work plan, which we don't have resources currently to work on, that's the Chapter 10 update, the telecommunication tower update, and a comprehensive review of outdoor events and venues, which was on our work plan. We don't really have resources right now to get to those if the board is interested in adjusting the work plan. I just say that probably the projects that will be impacted are other code updates which are going on right now, which are pretty critical, and that's the update of our land division codes and our Chapter 14 Procedure section, which we already began both of those, so we would be putting projects that are already underway on pause. So, that's where we're at with the work plan progress. Getting back into the two items, just as is articulated in the memo, what we feel we can do with existing capacity on the work plan with the marijuana regulations, we heard a couple of different concerns at the public hearing, all of which are easy fixes if we wanted to make to our time, place, and manner regulations. One, it's really a policy choice for the board, is whether or not to include or allow provisions for recreational marijuana production in the rural residential zone. The other is the setback in the farm zone. We currently have a 30-foot setback. We don't know if that is, we could get challenged on that item. We've already heard that that may run afoul of the Right to Farm Act, so that's another potential concern, the setback requirement in the E.F.U. zone. And then the final item is evading me right now. Oh, yeah, yeah. Right now, we drafted into the current regulations some requirements for air filtration and indoor grows. Those, from our initial review, we've gotten three applications in the door so far. Those are turning out to be really problematic, and we don't know what the real advantage is to them. As far as we can tell, we're the only county that has those sort of requirements for air scrubbers on indoor grow operations. So, staff at this time, looking at what other counties are doing and looking at how it's going to be very difficult to administer those requirements, and with limited, what we feel benefit, we would recommend, if we did open up the regulations again, that those be amended or removed altogether. So, those are the sort of the three policy issues that we know the board is interested in. I think we could get, we could bring back to you this winter, revised marijuana regulations to sort of move in whichever direction you decide on those items and get our codes working properly. If there's a bigger discussion that the board wants to have, I would say that we don't have resources to implement a task force or convene a large group of folks to comprehensively go through our existing regulations. I'd also point out that it might be wise to hold off on that sort of a discussion until we're through one grow season with the marijuana regulations and we really find out what's working and what isn't working. But that's staff's recommendation on that item. On the concerns that the board has about permitting for outdoor wedding operations, as I said, this is an ongoing issue. Unfortunately, there really is no clear, easy answer to that. We've really looked into our codes, we pulled all of the past land use decisions related to farm land and forest land, wedding operations and outdoor businesses, and there's really no clear path right now that's allowed by statute. by statute to enable these things. Folks are kind of left to try to shoehorn them into different various special use permit options, and all of them have their own unique problems. And there's a growing body of case law at Luba, which is making it more and more difficult to implement these sort of items. And we've had applications denied regularly lately because they just don't meet the criteria or the intent of the code. As I mentioned, there's a whole different ways folks can try to do these. They can go through home occupations or commercial uses in conjunction with a farm use or temporary use permits. These are all types of permits that the board's seen before, and there's really no clear way to just outright permit these things or create a more streamlined process for them. We have had conversations with DLCD about just amending our code to try to provide a special use process for outdoor wedding venues, and their stance is that there's really no statutory enabling mechanism. There's no language in the statute that would allow for these, and it'd be a pretty difficult press if we tried to pursue that. So, at this time, staff really doesn't have a clear recommendation in the board, except this is an item that a number of the counties are struggling with, and we would recommend that we maybe engage the Intergovernmental Relations Officer to try to pursue some sort of legislative fix, because I can tell you, this isn't an issue that's going away anytime soon. I know it's one that all the other counties are struggling with as well. So, that concludes my remarks for now.
Thank you, Kier. Christopher Bozovich?
Thank you, and thank you for the update. It's good to get it halfway through the year instead of getting all the way to the end of the year, and then we just get, see the projects you didn't get to get rolled to the next long-range planning efforts. I appreciate getting the mid-year update on this. I don't really have an issue with us not getting to some of the things that you're, you haven't read up there, like the telecommunications thing. I know I asked to have that put on there, but I understand that's just not one of our highest priorities, and I understand that the marijuana regulations were a surprise to us all and a very necessary item and took up a significant amount of time. So, with that, you know, I'd like to, you know, maybe at least propose to the board the idea of adding one other item that maybe didn't come up in the hearings but has become a significant item since the hearings in my district and around the county, and that's the processing of marijuana in the concentrates. And I don't know whether it would be a large lift or not to just put a total ban on that and make that just not legal in any land use zone, or to only allow CO2 processing, no other processing, and put it only in the rural industrial, rural, commercial, because we've already had two significant fires, one just last night. If they had been in the summertime, particularly the one that was out in Elmyra, it wouldn't have stopped burning until it got to the Pacific Ocean, probably. Yeah, this last summer, it was a huge fire. The flames were over 200 feet high at one point. So, you know, it's, I don't know whether we have the ability to do that or not at this point, but it just, you know, one of the, one of the questions we addressed late was to add it back into the forest zone, which I'm kind of like, wish I'd never done, and I actually argued against it at the time, but that processing in the concentrates, other processing, you know, the packaging, whatever they have to do to, you know, separate the buds and all that stuff, I'm fine with that, but making the concentrates, there's only one method that's safe, and it really needs to be done under lab conditions, and that's the CO2 process.
And if I might add, Commissioner, that's only legal under medical marijuana.
Yeah.
Is to, is my understanding to do the extraction process is only...
No, I mean, right now, under our current regulations, it allows for sort of secondary processing that's, you know, generally there's like a...
Are you sure it's not in the law?
It is in the law, and it's reflected in our code, so you can do processing, and that's the sort of thing that uses these sort of pretty dangerous flashy chemicals and with the centrifugal mechanism, and they, it's a dangerous process, yes. But one of the issues I would just, in response to Commissioner Bozovich's concerns, is that I think it's pretty clear that we're able to implement time, place, and manner regulations, so we'd have to be careful about how we structure. If there's an outright prohibition on these things that are allowed in the rule, we might run into real...
That's why I was thinking, you know, if we actually allow that, but only by one method and only in industrial and commercial zones, and I have no desire to go back and revisit rural residential issue personally, as one of five. There, in fact, particularly seeing we're considering pulling the air filtration out, because that's the biggest issue with having recreational grows and processing in rural residential neighborhoods is the odor is just not a good fit for rural residential, not to mention all the issues of the cash business and a few other things that they have to deal with. But I am really concerned about the processing in the concentrates, and I think if we were to look at it as a time, place, and manner of, the only manner we're going to allow is CO2, and the only place we're going to allow it is in rural industrial, rural, commercial, that will make sure that it's not being done out in farm and forest zones that have very little fire protection and not a very safe manner. And anyone that's going to do CO2 processing has got to know what they're doing anyway, because it's a laboratory process. It's not, you know, the 420 crowd is not going to set up a CO2 process. It's got to be done with stainless steel piping under pressure. It's, you know, and it's done right, it's perfectly safe.
So, if I might just dive in here for a moment, Christopher Bozovich. I think Kier is correct. It would be very difficult for us to eliminate the ability to do those types of concentrates. I think we certainly could pull back from the addition of allowing that type of processing in the farm zone, actually, in the forest zone, beg your pardon, thanks. That was something that staff was not recommending we do, and I think there are definitely, the statutes would support us eliminating that in the forest zone. But I think it would be very difficult for us to say you can do this type of processing and not that. Certainly, I personally, maybe Mark and Kier who've been working on this longer than I have, would want to have some more information. I know that we had some public testimony that there were some people who were specifically interested in some of the medicinal properties of some of these extractions. Again, I don't really know what the process is for getting those types of extractions and if that has the same sort of flammable properties. But again, I think it would be, we could start with backing out into the, of the forest zone with the processing, and we could look into perhaps as part of our evaluation, our ability to do that and take, again, we can look at what other counties have been doing. So, that's just one thing on that. The other thing I'd just note quickly on the rural residential, we're responding to the board's discussion from the previous meeting. There seemed to be quite a bit of interest. So, again, we are here at the pleasure of the board, and we'll follow the board's direction. And as Kier said, we don't really feel that we have the resource or the time to develop a large inclusive task force. We do think that if we want to make some of these changes, we could work with the board, we could work with our current interested parties list. I know people have contacted several of you and have shown a lot of interest in that, so even with doing this kind of short review, we can, you know, do something that would include a process to involve those people who are interested. If we're, if you're imagining in terms of a task force, something that we did more similar to like the large events task force, again, that would significantly impact our work plan, so thank you.
Commissioner Licken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, on the rural residential side of the marijuana conversation, if I'm remembering correctly, I mean, we adopted what you brought before us before the, before year end, but I think what we were looking at is maybe potentially forming a task force and with folks who were in, obviously in the industry and staff and maybe coming up, if there was even a possibility of coming up with something. And I know right now, we adopted what we adopted. And so, the other, the other question I had, so on the 2030 plan, some more course back from the city of Springfield, is this, is this because the, they obviously took College View, I think they blew College View or whatever they want to call that, out of, I call it the LCC side or, anyway, but they took that out of the equation, and now we're, I believe they're looking to pursue maybe going out north of Gateway. Is this maybe one of the reasons why they have pulled back on the diamond, or what's the reasoning here?
Well, it's, it's, it's not, I don't believe it wasn't the selection of sites. I mean, their, their last direction we heard was that, yeah, they were considering the north Gateway area, but I think what really had to do with was the timing and the implementation of the new urban growth boundary statutes that were adopted and took effect January 4th. So, basically, this, as I understand it from city staff, the city felt with conversations with both Eugene and Bend, who are both in the process of an urban growth boundary expansion, and with the state, is that counties that didn't adopt their new urban growth boundaries, who hadn't adopted them by January 4th, would be required to go through that new UGB process, and that was, obviously, that would have been really problematic for the cities because it would have put years of work, kind of put them back at square one again. So, my understanding is that they're working with the state now to try to get a different take on that ruling. I don't know if it's a ruling, I don't know if it was decided, or if it's just a, one of those interpretations of state law that DLCD likes to provide jurisdictions from time to time. So, I think they're working with the state on that very issue, and that's what's put the project on hold right now.
Is that the Bob Court right definition? Oh, wait, he's not there anymore, never mind. My favorite person. That DLCD, he knows Brother Joe. Anyway, I think that's really what I had on the, on the wedding venues issue. I appreciate your comment on that. I would, I think this is something maybe the board needs to look at is taking this, taking this to legislative committee and maybe having, working that route, working with staff, obviously, maybe to come up with some sort of way forward in working with our delegation. In particular, I would, my suggestion is see if we can work with Senator Byer on this. This is part of, potentially be part of his committee, but I think, you know, I think with so many rural counties, this is, this is really going to be, people are going to be looking at as an opportunity. And so, I, I know we've gone past, so maybe our next meeting, I'll offer that up as one of a, try to get head nods, or if you'll take it at the end of this meeting, I'll leave that up to Chair. Chair Stewart has three head nods, take this to legislative committee and see if we can figure out a route and through to, because it sounds like it just needs to be, path forward, I mean, that's, that's pretty broad, and obviously needs to be codified somewhere. And I don't know what that would be, but it'd be great if staff could work with Alex Kyler on, eventually on that to legislative committee and see if we could come up with something. There's a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, but there's several businesses out there kind of hanging and wondering what our next move will be, if we have a next move, and so I think that'd be worthwhile, having that conversation. That's really all I had. I think it's, I appreciate the update and really the work that's going on. It's amazing, really, with the challenges, with the, you know, staffing challenges, really what you have on your plate. I mean, it's, it's pretty incredible, and I really appreciate the hard work that's being put out there, and I will look forward, maybe, Kier, I'll talk to you a little bit later about the Springfield 2030 plan. I, I'm, I'm a little disappointed in the sense, because if you think about it, the economy's beginning to pick up, and where's the land availability that, for, for job creation here, either in the metro, especially in the city of Springfield? I mean, at one time, Springfield was known to have a lot of land available for, for job creation, and there's not so much anymore, so I, it'd be, so I'll be interested, just at least, you and I just have maybe a little conversation about that. It'd be less than 15 minutes, so, anyway, thank you.
Christopher Far.
Thanks. I'm not going to go into any detail such as we just had on the individual elements of the plan, other than, you know, 1.2 envision Eugene coordination. Need to hear more about that, but we've heard a lot about it, and we'll probably be hearing a lot about it for years to come. But what I'm looking at is the estimated FTE requirements, and for instance, you know, Commissioner Bozovich is talking about what looks like an extended process regarding land use requirements related to marijuana rules, and I see right now you only have 0.05 FTEs available for the entire rest of the process, according to the estimates. That being said, just, yeah, estimate 0.025, and you've already used 0.45. So, that's, I'm not, that's not a, that's just a comment regarding the numbers that we have here. I'm presuming that the, the numbers that you're looking at right there is, is based on a 40-hour work week, 2,080-hour work year, and so a full FTE is 2,080 individual hours. Okay. That goes pretty fast, and you have a total of someplace between three and four FTEs for all of this stuff, and we've already used one-half of an FTE on marijuana, and, excuse me?
Sorry, if I could just clarify, we actually only have about two and a half FTE available. This whole work plan would take somewhere between three and four, between estimates.
Exactly. Thank you, thank you. But even the outside number is between three and four, so, so the, and having used almost a half of an FTE already on marijuana, and the discussion seems to have just begun, you know, so clearly, we are understaffed in terms of FTEs available, and clearly, we have to be judicious in how we assign the use of those FTEs unless we're going to find you guys more FTEs from someplace. And I don't think they're just kind of hanging out there, is my impression. So, as we, you know, consider what we can do more as far as your work plan is concerned, it all has to be taken into context with everything else. I mean, you can't grab more FTEs for marijuana without taking them from someplace else, and I certainly don't want to take it away from, for instance, envision Eugene, so. I might be a little bit too simplistic in that. I mean, to me, I look at FTEs as, you know, with an HR background, 2,080 hours is 2,080 hours, and you can't make it, you know, 3,000 hours or 2,081 hours.
Well, I would note that, you know, most of our planners do as necessary work, more than the minimum number of hours per year, but I appreciate your comments about the fact that we really do have, as Kier notes, 2.5 FTE to manage this entire long-range work plan. Our current planner who's working on marijuana is a long-range planner, and he'll continue to provide that. I will note, and I'll try to provide that update to the board in writing soon, that we have a number of permits coming in, one building permits coming in this year, one of which we believe will happen in Goshen, and so I would actually like to take some of the long-range resources to help move those permits through in a timely fashion, right? So, again, just noting, again, I think as you pointed out, that we have some limitations in terms of what we're able to accomplish in a timely manner with the FTE we have. We'd be happy to take more if the board has some FTE funding to throw at us, but yes, we are currently, we have a stable budget, but we're not looking to make any.
And thank you for that, Lydia, because I see, you know, Lindsay's sitting back there, and I'm not interested in Lindsay working 2,500 hours and doing it for 2,080 hours, you know, that, I don't think Lindsay and her family are interested in that either.
And I know that.
And, you know, that goes across the board, that we can't just steal hours. You know, you talk about reallocating long-term planets into more short-term needs. Well, those long-term planets were, where their hours were planned in the long term for a reason, you know, I mean, it's a judicious decision you have to be making to reallocate that, because there aren't more people, and we don't want more hours, you know. I mean, that's not a good thing to just make people or give guilt people, I guess, into working more hours. So, that's, you know, that's my caution there, is that all the things that we're talking about, the work that we have to do on requirements related to marijuana rules, and you have five 100s of one FTE to do that, based on what I'm looking at right here, you know, it's, it's important that we bear in mind that we can't do everything. I don't think anybody believes that we can, but just a look at reality.
Well, then again, I don't think we're saying that we don't have the ability, and certainly, we're not really talking about, just so I'm clear, reallocating resources to encourage long range. I'm just pointing out that we want to be able to be flexible and nimble and respond to big projects when they come in, so I think those are wise decisions on our part. So, again, I do appreciate your comments, and we do have staff, I mean, Mark's time, he will continue to spend, I think, an additional time. We sort of will code it differently. He's working on the land use compatibility statements for instance that come in with regards to the marijuana, so even though he's, you know, working under a different category, he's still helping us implement those rules, and we'll be able to continue that.
And needless to say... And needless to say, things will come up, that unforeseen things. You know, Commissioner Lichten's talking about the sudden robust nature of the economy, or hopefully so, and the Springfield 2030 plan, well, we can't wait a year if it has to be looked at right now. So you've got to find the way to do it in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Mr. Boris.
I just wanted to add on to something that was just mentioned about why we haven't gotten to things. And, you know, the idea that we would take a project like reviewing the whole code, or, you know, add in the annual work plan, we would add something to it. And the number of 1,080 hours was just used. So, you know, a few, right, isn't that right?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, 2,080 hours, you know, but that is assuming that there are no holidays, right?
That's just 52 40-hour.
Right, that's 52 times 40, right? Well, we do have federal holidays. We have Christmas, and we have New Year's, and we have Martin Luther King Day, and we have other important days. And so you take all those out, and then we have something called vacations, or TM, because people have to have breaks from work. So we subtract all that. And then we have to have professional development, because if you're just, you know, brewing away, and you don't have any professional development, then you won't get any efficiency, won't get any new ideas, just be doing the same thing over and over and over. So you take all that out, and then you can't be using 2,000 hours or 2,080 hours, because it substantially drops the number of hours. I don't see how many hours you got up there for listening to droning board meetings, you know? But I happen to know that some people have to spend a lot of time on that. Maybe at that table, Steve is the person that puts the most number of hours there. So my point is, I think we need to be realistic about what we're really trying to accomplish. And I'd like to know what you're going to jettison for the rest of the year. I don't want to know what you want to accomplish, I want to know what you're not going to accomplish that's up there. What do you think it is?
Well, it's up to the board, but as I mentioned earlier, probably what would fall off would be our updates to lane code chapter 13, or lane code chapter 14.
Where are those on the?
2.1 and 2.5.
2.1?
Now, that's if we added.
That's if we added.
Oh, is there a red line that I've kind of obscured? Okay, 2.1, and what is that?
That is updates to our chapter 14 procedures section of lane code. So, and just to clarify, that would only, if the direction from the board is today, for example, to try to pursue some rule changes to deal with the wedding businesses, or to create some sort of an extended outreach project around the marijuana topic, beyond some pretty simple streamlined changes that staff could put together pretty quickly, then something additional would come off our work plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, Kier, I'd like to add a couple things. First of all, thanks for the update. And I think your suggestion on wedding venues is a good one, that we take that to the legislative committee and see if we have an avenue that might be possible using the legislature, and how's the right time for the 2017 session? It's too late for '16, so if we start looking at and researching it, and see if that's something that can be added to the 2017 workload, I think that's what we should do. I have to agree with the conversation on marijuana. You've explained the difficulties with the provisions that we've already put in there, like the air filters and that. And I have to kind of echo Commissioner Bozovic's comments, that that so far is what I'm hearing from people already. You know, mind, we haven't got a legal grow yet, I don't know that there's been a permit issued, but we do have folks that are out there growing already, and this is what I'm hearing from folks, is the conflict that they feel they have with odors. So I think it would be probably in our best interest to wait until the next work session, or the next, or the 2016, '17 long-range work plan, to see if we have something that needs to be added to tweak the current codes, or whether to make some additions to them. So I support those. I did have a couple items that are not on, well, one's on the list is the floodplain requirements from FEMA. I just learned, well, I've echoed your comments, that everything's kind of, there's hasn't been any new rules brought down that we need to adopt, but it did come to my attention that FEMA has already made some tweaks to its application, specifically the Loma fill permits, that they're requiring somebody to sign off a biological opinion, that, I guess, the activity is going to take place as and kind of bother the potential endangered species. My question to you is, have we figured out a vehicle for somebody to get through that? Because I'm not sure that there's biologists that are willing to sign off on that requirement. Do you know?
Yeah, so just a little background on this issue, you are correct in that we've received guidance from FEMA, local jurisdictions, that when an applicant puts fill in the floodplain and they come in to have this, to basically exempt their property from flood insurance, there's an application that's provided to the county, and it's a community acknowledgement form essentially that's now required. And the county has to state that this fill has not impacted an endangered species. And that puts an extremely large amount of liability on the county to make that determination. So the recommendation that we've heard through different sources, both at FEMA and the Association of State Floodplain Managers, is they're recommending that counties don't sign that acknowledgement. So the alternative is for a landowner to try to provide us some documentation that this action didn't impact endangered species, and that in many ways is, you know, an environmental assessment or a biological assessment that staff here aren't qualified to review, and we've yet to receive one of those yet. So in our mind, probably to remove the county's potential liability is, that would be the only vehicle, is if they could present us some sort of a report to that effect, and we've yet to see one of those. But as of right now, I don't, I'm not aware of any other process.
And I think Kier's correct. I will note, and I believe that we've spoken about this, and there have been a couple of applicants that we've been looking at, and they've been frustrated, because as Kier says, we don't have the ability, the authority, and we've been given some pretty good advice in terms of how other counties, again, are treating this, not to sign those unless we can make those types of determinations. But we recognize that this puts our customers in a very challenging position. So our floodplain manager has reached out to our FEMA representative and asked for some guidance from her, and we haven't heard back. And again, a lot of people admire this problem. We don't have people yet who have found a solution. But I just wanted to let you know that we are continuing to work on it. We have had some people who are professionals who are willing to say that they believe that in this particular case, that FEMA requirement is being met, and so we will sign the form noting, you know, that please see attached, and it's something that's being provided by the applicant, or like Kier says, a biological assessment. But it's still very much on our radar. Like I said, we have a couple of folks who are trying to get applications approved, so Deanna's continuing to look into it, but sorry, we don't really have a solution quite yet.
Okay, thanks. And then I had one item that I'd like to just have you mark for a discussion at the next long-range work plan. This year, I received quite a few concerns about explosives being used on rural residential property. And after doing a great deal of research, this is kind of an area that isn't regulated. You know, if somebody's going to be using explosives in a commercial or an industrial operation, it's highly regulated as to what they have to follow. But somebody that hypothetically wants to remove some rock using explosives for a foundation on a house, or maybe a ditch to their well, or something like that, there's very little oversight. And one of the problems that was, I think, really evident is that no notice to neighbors, and if you're in an RR5 subdivision and you're five acres, those activities can really startle or cause some damage to your neighbor. So I'd like to have that item as a discussion point, and see maybe how long it might take to maybe adopt some code that requires at least a minimum notification to your neighbors when using explosives in RR5 zones, because that might move us forward in giving some relief, or at least some help to folks that don't feel like they have much recourse when their neighbors using those explosives. So I'd appreciate that. Mr. Bozovic?
Thank you. So wrapping back around, one of the things it sounds like is, on some of these items that are more complex, it may be better to do a legislative effort. So I will note that on the whole issue about extraction of concentrates from marijuana, there's also an effort to get the legislature to take statewide action on that. Because Colorado, shortly after legalizing recreational, did the same thing eventually, banned all methods and only approved CO2 in licensed laboratories. You know, because, and if you are particularly interested in medicinal extracts, all the other ones that are involving flammable gases and liquids, et cetera, do the extraction, actually can add byproducts of those extractions that are actually harmful to you, where the CO2 doesn't. But, so I'll keep moving on that on the legislative end. But there are a couple things on wedding venues, you know, we talked specifically about going legislative, and the question is, do we want to do this as a legislative effort, or is this a definition in code that we want to fix? And this really isn't so much about wedding venues, it's home occupations and resource zones, because it doesn't really matter whether it's a wedding venue or whatever. The big question that came up in the most recent controversy was, could you build a new building, never use it for the purpose and the resource that's allowable use on the resource zone, and immediately convert it to a home occupation? Because one of the things that's very clear in our code is, home occupations can only happen in a resource zone in an existing building that was utilized for an approved use of that zone. And in this particular recent case, folks pulled an ag permit for an obviously non-ag building, and never used it for ag purposes, and tried to immediately permit it as a home occupation. Is that something that can be handled with a simple definition fix of what an existing building is? Or do we need to go to the legislature to have them fix that? That's kind of a question maybe to be answered later. Same thing with the issue about noise and everything else, and what's the definition of disruptive activity? That got to be whether it's supposed to be our current noise code, decibel levels, or is it just something that the hearings official feels meets that level? Is that something, is that a legislative fix, or is that a definition fix? And if it's a definition fix, then it may be a future long-range work plan, maybe not this one. But, you know, we're in a short session, it's going to be hard to get them to adjust anything relative to something that doesn't already have a bill pertaining to language, and I doubt there's anything that's pertaining to wedding venues. So we're talking about not touching this till spring of 2017 with the legislature. And it seems like there would be a lot of cleanup we could do very simply by a couple quick definition cleanups. And that's, so that's just a question for you all to ponder, maybe get back to us and give us some direction on it. What's better done as a code cleanup, and what's better done in the state legislature? And marijuana, there's already bills pending to fix some of the problems, and House Bill 3400. So, you know, lobbying for those to be changed to address extraction, I think, with the number of fires that have happened in the last six months all over the state, I don't think it's going to be a big lift. But lobbying them to suddenly pick up wedding venues in a short session, I think is an impossible lift.
Chair Stewart, Commissioner Bozovic, we can certainly look into that. Again, Kier, in preparing for this presentation, did do a little bit of preliminary research, I would say, has done some reaching out. We've obviously been struggling with this in our code for, you know, a number of months, if not a number of years, because people have, as Kier said, come in and tried to use these different avenues. The neighbors often appeal, it goes to the hearings official, the hearings official finds that we're not in compliance, maybe with our own code, and then if it gets taken up to Lubbock, it's found that we're not in compliance with state law. So again, I'm happy to have us take a little bit more of a look at it, but I do not believe it's as simple as changing our definitions, because again, what we're really looking at is, are we out of compliance with state law? So again, I'm happy to do a little bit more evaluation, and maybe Kier knows already if there is any more research to be done in that area. But we don't, I'm not hopeful.
Yeah, we could certainly look into those two issues that you raised, and see how they might affect future proposals. Joe, I just want to clarify, the first was, you know, the issue of the structure and the date on how, when the structure can be used. You know, it's neither here nor there, but I think in the majority of cases, when somebody proposes to use an ag building for a wedding venue, regardless of whether or not it's allowable because it was there, and we recognize it as something that can be available for the home occupation, you can't have paying customers, you can't have folks in an ag building, just it's not an allowable use under the building code. So Mr. Head was kind of off base on that item anyways, regardless of whether or not we viewed it as an allowable structure. So, but I do understand the larger point about that issue.
I'm familiar with another wedding venue that's a converted horse arena. And the horse arena has paying customers in it too, you know, as people pay to use the arena for their horses, so I'm not quite sure.
A horse arena has a much different classification from a building code standpoint than an ag building. So again, an ag building is exempt from building permits. The understanding is it would never have an occupancy of more than 10 people, because when you have those types of occupancies, it's important to allow people to get in and out quickly. Arenas would have met those standards when they were constructed, ag buildings don't.
And so the other, I'm sorry, the other one, just to clarify, was the definition of, I didn't catch the term you used.
I can't remember what the, I'm trying to remember the language used in the hearings official's decision, but it was relative to the level of noise generated by the activity.
Unreasonable interference.
Unreasonable interference, or something like that. And a huge argument got to be over what our noise ordinance says versus what the hearings official decided was unreasonable interference, and whether there was any need to have a further definition of unreasonable interference for home occupations. And I don't want to concentrate on wedding venues, this is about any home occupation in a resource zone. You know, there's lots, I've had complaints about folks running automotive shops as a home occupation, you know, and revving cars at midnight, trying to test their engines out, you know. It's, there's, it's more than just wedding venues. And it's more, and it's about, you know, the people moving to what is, you know, a resource zone piece of property, and then trying to convert it to a commercial activity under a home occupation, and, you know, building structures that are, you know, they claim are ag structures, or whatever, or even a horse arena, never really using it for that and immediately converting it to, quote, "the home occupation." Those are the questions, you know, is that something that's a definition question, or is that a legislative fix? There is a whole different issue of, there doesn't really seem to be a place for wedding and event venues in resource zones, you know, other than the exceptions they've made for wineries so far. Really, and that's it. And that, and there is a desire by lots of rural property owners to augment their income with that type of venue. That seems much more a legislative issue, because even if we found a way to take permit, we're still kind of at cross purposes with the overall statewide land use plan. So that, to me, lends to a legislative, but whether these are more legislative fix or code fix, because we've got till next spring, obviously, to do either, as we decide whether it's going to be in a long-range work plan, or whether it's going to be a legislative priority for the board.
Other comments? I don't know if we gave you any clear direction. Sounds like you got several items that you could get back to us.
A lot of notes here. I have, just to be clear, I have not heard any direction to have us go forward with I have, just to be clear, I have not heard any direction to have us go forward with creating a task force for marijuana at this time, nor did I hear direction for us to come back with any revised ordinances. So, at this point, we're going to move forward, we're going to implement the rules as you've adopted them, and perhaps this is something the board will consider again after we've gone through a growing season. Is that correct? And then I also didn't hear any additional ads for our work plan. So, again, we'll continue to do the excellent work that our planning team does, and as I noted, I've met with you all individually, I'll probably be bugging you more and more often, so we'll have regular check-ins with the board about our, not just long-range work plan, but what we're also doing in current planning, building, compliance, et cetera. Thank you.
And just for the record, we just used half of the time you had left on your plan for marijuana, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll move to item 13, which is review of assignments.
Ms. Chair, in addition to the follow-up on the LMD long-range plan discussion that we had, I don't have anything other than that, other than Ms. Jones did ask that all five commissioners go see her at the end of the meeting to sign the order under D4, the sale of the parcel of county-owned surplus property, tax lot 1901. So, at the conclusion of the meeting, if you could see Ms. Jones to sign that order, it requires an notary as well, so she wanted to do that after the meeting. That's all I have, unless I missed something.
Yeah, I think there was a couple other items. 11C should be coming back as a consent item. That's the MOU. And then we also had Ms. Miller's item was going to come back with the adjustment of the code, and make up citizen members to the Audit Committee.
Right. The Performance Audit Committee adjustment will come back with an amendment to the lane manual, as well as a new board order, because the board order that you amended references the existing lane manual. So, we got to come back both with a lane manual adjustment, as well as a new board order that references the new changes. Thank you, I'm sorry, I forgot that. And then, did you say 11?
I'm sorry, 12.
12C.
It's the memorandum with the DLCD on the.
Yes, right. Okay.
Anything else? All right, is there any other business? Just, and just one other reminder, please stop by, I think Deanie will try to get each of us to sign a deed, and before you leave for today, I appreciate it. So. Well, I thought Deanie was going to have.
Diana. Go see Diana after the conclusion, if you will.
Okay. Thank you. So, with that, we are adjourned.